Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you all to the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty fifth, the City of Springfield License Commission Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at five thirty-three P M. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the Springfield Board of Licensed Commissioners hearing held on Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Did all commissioners have an opportunity to review minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any corrections? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Springfield Board of Licensed Commissioners hearing held on Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Next item on the agenda is under continued petition. This is a continued new petition for transfer of all alcoholic beverages package store license from Ian Corp, D B A Johnny Mac Liquors to Nash Ride Red Ca- Krishna, Inc., D B A Johnny Mac Liquors located at nineteen forty-nine Wilbraham Road, Kajal, Savant, Savant Delan Patel, manager of record.
So commissioners, I think the issue here and why this got continued was because the proposed manager was the manager of record somewhere else. Uh, so that that's what we're back on today.
Correct. Um, who is here for Johnny Mac?
I'm here. This is Josh Levine of Levine Law in East Long Meadow, and the proposed manager of record is also here on the Zoom.
Okay. So we have a new proposed manager of record.
Correct. Um, so originally when I I was here, I believe in June or July, the you instructed us that the manager of record, uh, the proposed manager of record was also manager of record in West Springfield, could not be manager of record in both places. And, uh, the thinking then was that we would change the manager of record in West Springfield. Uh, after talking to my client, uh, they changed, they decided to propose a new manager of record for Springfield and keep the West Springfield manager of record as is. Um, so that's brings us here today. Uh, I modified the application and brought over the, um, brought over a few pages, including a new Cory, uh, to the office. And I'm happy to present, uh, Ms. Patel, if the board would like.
Okay, great. Um, Ms. Patel?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, can you, can you tell us a little bit about your experience as manager of record?
I worked at Spud's Gas Station from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, which had beer and wine, and I also worked at Uptown Liquors from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four.
No, okay. Um, so you are, um, tip certified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um. Where do you live, ma'am?
Fitting Hills.
Okay, and, um, what are the hours?
Forty hours.
So you're gonna be working forty hours a week?
Yes, ma'am.
What would your, what are the, um, hours for the establishment and what are your hours?
The establishment is eight to ten Monday through Saturday and ten to eight on Sunday. Uh, I I don't know Ms. Patel's particular schedule, but, uh, that those are the store hours.
Okay. So I'm, I'm the, I am gonna be the, I'm the buyer, gonna be the owner. Uh, so we're anticipating her working, uh, between eight A M. and four P M.
Eight A M. and four, the four P M. and someone else?
Yes, so, uh, we will have other staff, uh, working there, uh, which, uh, we will make sure that they're, they are also tip certified.
Okay, um, Ms. Patel?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you realize that being manager of record means that, um, anything that happens in the establishment, whether you are present or not, you will be, you, you would have to answer to this board. It would be your responsibility.
Yes, ma'am.
And you will set that, um, responsibility?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, um, any, um, how many, how many people will be, how many other employees, how many other people will be selling alcohol?
Two, two, three.
Two, three, and they're all tip certified?
Yes, ma'am, we'll make sure.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Uh, just one question. She indicated that she would make sure, are they certified or is something that's gonna happen?
Yes.
The, the current, there are currently employees there who are tip certified, uh, from my discussions with the applicants. Uh, they're not sure which, who will be working at the store yet, uh, but anyone they do have working for them now is tip certified, um, at Uptown, so that would be the plan going forward here, and they are, we had a long chat about the responsibilities of a manager of record, uh, just the other day.
Um, I, I, I do have to just mention a, a concern that I have. Um, Ms. Patel's hours will be eight to four P M. and usually, you know, the store, I'm, I'm assuming it's probably gonna be busy after four P M. into the evening hours and, you know, and on the weekends. Um, so, which is why I made sure to mention that, you know, it, it would be your responsibility, Ms. Patel, whether you are present or not, that if anything were to happen, that it will be your responsibility.
Yes, ma'am. I am planning on being there if it's busy on the days of business after four.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? No, then I'd like to make a, um, motion to continue to approve the new petition for transfer of all, of all, um, alcoholic beverages package store license for Ian Corporation, D B A Johnny Mac Liquors to Nash Rad Krishna, Inc., D B A Johnny Mac Liquors located at nineteen forty-nine Wilbraham Road, Kajal Patel, manager of record. There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Again, item on the agenda is a continued new petition for all alcoholic beverages license for Antojos Corp, D B A Antojos Springfield, D B A Antojos Springfield located at two sixty-three Hancock Street, on fourth Street, I'm manager of record.
Okay, commissioners, before we get started on this, um, Commissioner Kane, I, I know you wanted me, um, to review the carryout, um, statute, uh, for the commission. Um, essentially, the statute requires that alcohol be sold to someone that's over twenty-one, obviously. Um, the drink has to be in a sealed container. That's not optional. That's in the statute. Um, it has to be sold as part of the same transaction as a purchase of food. Um, and that order cannot be made at, uh, later than the hour which the establishment is licensed or after twelve A M. So if, if Antojos was open until, you know, two A M., th- that to-go is cut off at twelve A M. Uh, and if the transaction has to include at least one item of food, um, prepared onsite sufficient to serve one individual. The limit is sixty-four fluid ounces of mixed drinks per transaction. Um, and if the vehicle, if it goes into a motor vehicle and it's gonna be transported, uh, the operator has to transport it in the trunk of the vehicle or some area that's not considered the passenger area, probably the bed of a pickup truck is, it's probably where, where they're leaving that open. Um, but Commissioner Kane, those are, those are essentially the, the elements of the appropriate statute. Um, another issue that we had to go over is, you know, we have the concern, and this is why I, uh, wanted this continued, is we wanted to reach out, uh, to the churches in the area. Uh, we did official measurements, um, both through Google Maps and with a tape measure, um, by the Springfield Police Department, the same way we would measure a school zone, uh, for the beyond a reasonable doubt standard, um, in criminal court. And we have a measurement with the tape putting Abundant Life Worship and Praise Tabernacle within three hundred and fifty-seven feet of Antojos.
Yeah.
Google Me- Google Maps has it within three hundred and sixty-five feet of Antojos. Uh, Spring of Hope Church of God in Christ with the tape is three hundred and four feet from Antojos. And with Google Maps, uh, we got a number of three hundred and nine feet. Uh, so those, those are the measurements that we have, and what that means is we have to abide by the statute, uh, which is, uh, chapter one thirty-eight sixteen C, which means that if the commission, uh, is going to approve this application, we have to determine writing after hearing that the premises, uh, meeting in Tobos having the liquor license is not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the church. And then I, I think all the commissioners received it, but we did receive a formal opposition, uh, from, uh, Talbot Swan, um, stating that, um, his, uh, the Spring of Ho-, uh, if I can find it, but he, um, the Spring of Hope Church of God in Christ opposes, uh, the license, uh, and essentially they, they do feel it would be detrimental, uh, to their worship. Um, so that's really the, the updates that I have for the commission. Um, if any commissioners have further questions on applicable law, please let me know and be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Just want to thank Attorney Smith for that information. Thank you. Thank you. And, and before we get into this, everyone who's on the Zoom and everyone who's in the room with me, it got a little heated last time. Everyone's gonna get a chance to speak. We're not gonna cut anyone off. Um, so just, just, you'll get your chance. Don't interrupt other people when they're speaking. And if there's something that you really missed that you want to raise after you hear the other side, let us know. We'll give you another chance. We're not gonna let it go on forever, um, but everyone's gonna get a chance to speak. I, I know there's some strong feelings about this, and that's fine. Um, just, just respect the other side and let them speak. Thank you.
Yeah, if it's okay with the commission too, I'll kind of just start, um, with, with the brief overview and kind of give an update on the conversations we've had with some of the interested parties.
Sure.
Um, so, and, and just to begin, I think there's been a lot of confusion, um, regarding the concept of Antojos. Um, so just to be very clear, so Antojos is a dessert styled, uh, store and juice bar specializing in acai bowls, uh, smoothies, crepes, and similar dessert styled foods. Um, it's not your classic ice cream store. Um, and, and to be very clear, there will be no alcohol in ice cream. Um, just beverages such as pina coladas, daiquiris, frozen margaritas, et cetera. Um, this is a kind of a new trendy concept that, uh, deeply resonates with young adults, you know, especially in the age groups of eighteen to thirty-five, um, due to its visual aesthetic and ingredients. Um, and I believe the theme of Antojos was very clear to those who attended our event last night, um, and that physically seeing the theme helped clear up a lot of the confusion. Um, after sending out various letters, emails, and phone calls in hopes of scheduling discussions uh, with the parties who have been in opposition to our application, uh, such as the Old Hill Neighborhood Council, State Rep. Representative Williams, and the Spring of Hope Church. Uh, we invited them to the establishment last night, um, so they could see the theme firsthand. I'm gonna discuss the concerns they had. Um, I believe last night, uh, was a great success, and those in attendance left a lot more comfortable and much more open minded in regards to Antojos' proposed plans, um, and the theme, um, which is something we, we really request today, that, that those still in opposition is to keep an open mind, um, especially with some of the points I discuss here. Uh, in attendance last night, we had, uh, Rhonda Sherrill, uh, from the Old Hill Neighborhood Council, um, an acquaintance of hers, and Lazine Swan, uh, from the Spring of Hope Church. We had a very productive conversation, and I wanted to discuss, um, a few of the key points that we discussed last night. Again, I think there was some confusion. There will, there will be no alcohol in ice cream or any of the foods, just the beverages. Um, and each alcoholic beverage served will only contain two ounces of alcohol in them and will be measured using customary bartender equipment, um, such as those silver measuring cups. Um, and this is actually the size of the beverage that will be, you know, served. It's, it's not a large beverage at all. Uh, next, and importantly, um, the business has actually decided to set its own restrictions on the sale of alcoholic beverages, including that each customer is only allowed to purchase one single alcoholic beverage per day. Um, that one single alcoholic beverage will only contain two ounces of alcohol in them. These will be only mixed drinks. There will not be, you know, customers won't have the ability to buy shots or buy a beer or anything like that. Um, only these mixed drinks with, you know, two ounces of alcohol. Uh, this is not a place where customers are going to gather and consume numerous beverages, and based on the, the alcohol content, these are not highly intoxicated beverages. Um, and I, a, a, a key point too last night, um, was, uh, anyone who has visited the establishment, you'll see that the serving counter and register are to the right side of the building. Um, and if we were approved, they would set up a whole separate counter on the left side, uh, with its own register to keep the, the service of alcoholic and non-alcoholic items completely separate, um, and no intermingling of those. Uh, some things we discussed, and, and I think, uh, they were happy to hear is, of course, we, again, we have a two s- two-step verification process for checking I Ds. Um, obviously, customers will present their I D., um, and then that I D. will be run through an, a, a official I D. scanner. Of course, all employees and owners and managers, uh, will be tip certified. Um, some things that were also discussed, uh, between the business, uh, the church and, and the council were posi- potential charities and fundraising events, which was, which was great to see. Um, and I did also want to note that the proposed license premises does not include the picnic tables outside, and customers will not be permitted to drink the alcoholic beverages outside. Um, another item that is worth noting, a big compliment that was made last night and is consistently made to the owners, is how much Antojos has cleaned up the, the area surrounding the premises. Um, Antojos and the property owner have really transformed the area, um, and turned away and deterred a lot of panhandling in the area. Um, I was there last night, and it was actually those in attendance last night who pointed this out to us, and we're, and we're really happy with how the area has turned out. Um, and in our opinion, I mean, there is surely potential for resolution here, whether it be, you know, restricting the hours in which they can sell alcohol, um, the restrictions we have already imposed. Um, we hope this could have been discussed in greater detail prior to today's hearing, um, but didn't have quite the opportunity that we desired. Uh, we didn't get many or any responses to our, uh, attempted communications to the interested parties. Um, we respectfully request that Antojos at least be given an opportunity here. Um, I think it's important to remember that if there ever was an issue, incidents, or, or anything going on at the establishment, the License Commission, the A B C C, has the ability to take action and penalize them and either suspend or revoke their license. Uh, but they at least deserve an opportunity to, to, to show, you know, that they can safely and properly serve alcoholic beverages. Um, so these are some things I just want to touch on. I don't know if Stephen, if you want to add anything based on, uh, yesterday's hearing or last week's hearing.
How you guys doing? Good evening. Um, I mean, we've covered up, uh, uh, on my behalf, I just want to apologize for my last behavior, uh, my vision and my passion took over me. Um, this is something I've been, you know, working really hard for the community and, you know, for everybody that's active. So, um, I want to apologize for my, uh, uh, the way I came out, that's, uh, maybe we have, and that's all I have to say.
Um, any questions from the commissioners? Um, any, um, public input?
Madam Chair, if, if it's all right with the commission, I, I was gonna start with the people that are here, uh, that came down. That way, if they need to be somewhere, they can leave.
No problem.
Right, okay. So if anyone wants to come forward and speak, I know a lot of you were here last time. Uh, come forward, keep your voice up, um, state your name, um, you know, don't be shy. Get as close to the screen as you need to. Um, state your name, um, if, if you, you know, like, if you're in that neighborhood, make it clear that you live in that neighborhood and, and state what, what your feelings are, either for or against.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Gwen Hines. I'm the pastor of Abundant Life Worship and Praise Tabernacle, three hundred Hancock Street, here in the city of Springfield, known also as, um, well, you know where we are. Six Corners. I am very much opposed to the, um, idea of selling alcoholic beverages in this area, simply because I have a lot of young people in my church. I have young adults in the church, in the area. We've been there now almost seventeen years. And when we started, the Six Corners was not a very safe neighborhood to be in. But as we've grown, we've seen the, uh, it become more safer. We haven't had any major incidents, you know, fighting and shootings and all of that stuff. My very, my concern is, we have an alcohol, we have an alcoholic, um, store right on State Street, which is about five minutes away. And here we are on Hancock Street. We want to put another, I think that we really don't need that in our neighborhood where we have schools. That's not far. We have G Bear right down the street. We have schools right there. And I am very much opposed to any of this because I want our city, especially where we are, Six Corners, and in that area to stay safe. And I went past it. We passed it. I could see the store from our church very clearly. I really have to walk there. And when we saw it, it was supposed to be an ice cream shop, which I thought was very nice. And now it's turning into, um, ice cream plus alcohol. And I'm just, I'm just not safe and secure about it, and I'm just here to voice my opinion that Abundant Life Worship and Praise Tabernacle, we do not wish for this to happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I respond quickly? Uh, so, I mean, so what, I understand there's a, a, another alcohol store close by. Is that a package store or a non-premise?
Right on State Street, right by, um, usually Burger King, but now it's starting to, um, Topper Chicken, right there in that area.
Right, okay. And, and obviously, we understand your concerns, um, but i- i- and kind of the position we're taking is, I think, you know, there, there's much more harm that could come from a package store than us serving these small cups with two ounces of alcohol in them. Um, and, and again, and I, I, I guess I should have reiterated before, this is not a late night spot that is gonna lead to a lot of late night disturbances, lead to potentials of crime and stuff like that. Um, the, the latest it is open is eleven. Um, we're not even sure, of, of course, you know, the commission has the ability to limit, restrict the hours that, that it is, that alcohol is sold. Um, but I, in our, and it is our position that, I mean, there's, there's a lot more harm that could come from a package store than us putting two ounces a- of alcohol into a strawberry daiquiri.
Attorney Goldstein, moving forward just for efficiency, if you could just write down your responses to the public and then we, you can, I'll give you, not give you a chance to respond, but I, I don't want it to turn into a constant back and forth. That's
Got, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, any, anyone else? Thank you.
Good evening. I am a member of Abundant Life Worship and Praise. Um, I also live not too far from the area.
And what's your name?
Monique Hornsby.
Thank you.
And, um, I object to, um, the establishment with the, um, selling of the, um, daiquiris with the alcohol. Um, I don't see the positive in it. Um, you do, you did say it has a certain percentage of alcohol. Um, any percentage is not good when it comes to young people. Um, also, and there's also schools, um, that are close. There is an apartment building also, and there is two churches also. Um, so I disagree, and I object.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Barbara Gresham, President of Oldham Council. Let us get the last meeting. And we still, um, oppose this ban in our community. My next question is, um,
Please keep your voice up.
All right. My next question is, does the, um, Alcohol Beverage Commission, do they have a say in, do they have the last say in this situation like this?
They, they do. So they, they would go through this board and then it goes to the, to the A B C C. That's, that's how the process works.
Okay, that was my question. But we still, Old Hill Neighborhood Council board still oppose of having this in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. They're, they're there. Here's the chair.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Foster Frank. I do not live in that neighborhood. However, I am a concerned citizen of Springfield. All my life, I've been here. Not sure if you have, but I have. But I'm here to oppose the business selling the alcohol, that selling a ver- a beverage that contains alcohol, whether it's a pina colada with or without. Um, Mike, I appreciate the business being here. I think it's a great thing. However, I oppose to it because of the fact that it appears that if they sell alcohol or provide a beverage with alcohol in it, it's going to improve their revenue. To me, I'm opposed to that. If you want to do something to the neighborhood, having that business there to improve it and have other businesses there, I think it's a great idea because of children and people that live in the neighborhood as well as churches, and we want to improve the neighborhood, not extend it to a bad one. Um, I'm saying, standing here again, saying that I see again that the License Commission, um, has gained approval to another business that's selling alcohol in, you know, on Main Row, which is again, and, you know, um, four, one, three, area code, as well as in Ward Four. How many more businesses do you have to have in Ward Four that want to sell alcohol or any kind of alcohol? I'm tired of it. I'm sick of it, and I'm sit, very disappointed that the commission is not doing their homework to find out how many places or businesses are selling alcohol in the neighborhood. That is not right. We need to stop it, and needs to stop now.
Ju- just to be clear for the record for everyone, that the, uh, the license on Wilbraham Road, that's a pre-existing store, um, under due management. So that, that's not a new.
Okay, regardless, I'm super excited.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? There you go.
Is is there anyone else going? Sorry.
Uh, some are coming, Attorney Goldstein.
My name is Lorraine Trump, and, um, I live in oh, one, one, oh, nine. And I've been here all my life. I'm eighty-four years old. And I've been here all my life, I'm eighty-four years old. I have seen so many things happen in Springfield in what is considered our neighborhood. Why is it that you all don't have a problem with putting things in our neighborhood that you wouldn't put in your own neighborhood? Why do we have to accept the downfalls of everything that comes in our neighborhood? It's bad enough that we're going through hell anyway in our neighborhood, because it nobody seems to care. We care, we live there. These are our kids, these are our family members. How many more people have to go to prison because of what you all are doing to us with this alcohol? How can you say you're only gonna put a little bit of alcohol in a cup? Alcohol is alcohol. You might not drink one cup. If it's a cup, maybe you want three or four cups. Stop playing games with us and try to understand why we're here, why we're fighting for ourselves. Because if we don't, we say you all don't care, and we care. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else in the room which to speak? Um, so there's no one else that's here present who wants to speak, I think just for purposes of organization. Anyone who's against that's on the Zoom should go first, and that way Attorney Goldstein can respond to everyone at once. And um and then uh the the floors can go after that, if that makes sense.
Okay, I I know that you acknowledged, I'm sorry, um I know that you acknowledged Reverend Swan's um opposition. But you didn't state the points that he pointed out in the letter, I think that all the commissioners got it, but I'm not sure if you all do. Um, his, the main point was uh the proximity to the church and the children's ministries that is in the neighborhood. The proximity to schools, parks, and other youth services. The community saturation and public health concerns is basically what all the other ministries was talking about. And then the conflict of um the intended purpose of 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 selling alcohol, period. Um, so those were the points that he made in his letter, I do, I don't know how many of the commissioners got it. But I know that it was sent to the uh commission. And I know that you acknowledged it, but those are the points that he basically pointed out in his letter. And if you would just take those into consideration, um he was certainly uh in opposition to it.
Attorney Smith, Attorney Smith, this is Attorney Alicia Days. Good evening, everyone. So, everyone received a copy, all commissioners received a copy of the letter that uh Bishop Swan sent to me this morning. So, um just for the record, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone that's online that would like to um speak in opposition to this license? Anybody would like to speak in favor of the license?
I think we had all our supporters there last week, um but I'm happy to, you know, kind of to respond to some of the points that were made. No one else is?
That's fine, Attorney Goldstein, go ahead.
Thank you, um, so yeah, um we absolutely understand the concerns with, you know, from the church and the proximity to the church. Um, I, we feel like we had a really good, good uh conversation with the representative from the church last night. Um, I think, you know, and and like I said, we understand the concerns, but I I think, you know, there are the with between the church and 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 the store, there's different hours of operation, not necessarily going to be, I I the co-mingling and and relating, I don't think there's gonna the lead to a detrimental effect. Um, I I understand the concern a- and what the alcohol has the potential due to those surrounding. But I don't see the correlation a- and the direct detrimental effect to the church. I understand the concern, but not necessarily the detrimental effect. Um, and uh one of the, one of the previous um um individuals in opposition uh mentioned that, you know, one drink can lead to multiple. Um, as as we discussed earlier, there will be uh a limit of one alcoholic beverage to each individual per day, um so individuals won't have the op- opportunity or ability to purchase multiple alcoholic beverages. Um, I understand, you know, the that, you know, this is coming to your neighborhood, um Stephen's actually from Holyoke um and 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 has been living in Springfield and lives nearby. Um, so I think, you know, that this does have a direct impact on his community and where he lives. And that's why I think also he will vows to make, you know, look out for the community and do everything in its best interest and not do anything, not take any action that would be adverse to the community or have a have a negative effect. And I understand, you know, yeah, he, of course, this will increase revenue, but he he, you know, the the owners have their family that they're trying to provide for also. Um, so I think there needs to be some deference given there. And obviously, I know there is a lot of opposition here, but I would ask that, you know, alternatively, that the commission, you know, consider setting restricting the hours or or some sort of re- resolution.
Thank you. Um, any, any questions from the commissioners? Comments?
Yes, um, I just like to say that the commission does its job at its best, and I feel that any establishment that wants to come forward and wants to open a business in the city of Springfield, that we take everything into account. But we should also give an establishment a fair shake and give them the opportunity to open their business, and if there's a violation or 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 something of that sort, it is the our duty for them to come in front of us and we can handle or give any type of suspension, revoke any to that. So, I honestly believe that regardless, you know, we should be giving an establishment a fair shake. We should be giving them a fair shake to let them do what they gotta do and perform. Everyone has the opportunity to put a complaint afterwards if he does not, he or she does not meet the criteria that was laid out for him to have an establishment open. We shouldn't automatically discard the person or the establishment without really seeing how he's going to work. Um, so, we should all have an open mind to the situation and does not mean that no one, that the public does not have resources if something is violated. Uh, he or she should be able to open an establishment and do that person's job and it's entitled to that person to open a business to make money. That's why they open up a business is to make money and provide for their family. We shouldn't shun that, we should automatically try to help that individual into that person violates. It 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 it, people should also look at it, if they look at it and say, if I'm opening up an establishment I'll be, I I hope the city gives me a fair shake to let me run my establishment until I failed or neglect. Um, I don't think he, uh, this person as thus far has shown that he would not be a good neighbor or good uh business owner. I just like to say that and and everyone should at least give this person a fair shake to let him run his business. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment, and I think that uh we all are here uh with an open mind, but as a commissioner, we have guidelines and regulations. And uh if we would just uh go by the regulation of the Valerie uh guideline, uh we type, we 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 look at the uh type of business or the type of the operation, the type of license. The neighborhood's opposition, we have to bring that into consideration as well, and the proximity to church and school. And so I think that we are in uh, uh, we are obviously trying to abide by those rules and regulations. We, we, we understand that the neighborhood has been cleaned up, it's a nice business there. I've go- I've driven by on several occasions, I haven't seen anyone hanging out uh or anything like that. So, we do applaud him for the work that he has done, but we have guidelines as commissioners. And we have to listen to our uh neighborhood, they are in opposition, so we have to listen to them. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner De Angel Antonio, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Espinosa, um both, both sides have made some very, very valid points. Uh, however, I do have to agree, we do have rules and regulations that we do have to follow as commissioners. We have a due diligence to the community, that we abide by those rules and regulations. I'm sure this gentleman runs a a wonderful business, it's been great for the neighborhood. However, to extend it to what he's looking to do with so much neighborhood opposition. Um, I I have to take into consideration their um their feelings of of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, anything else you would like to add, um Attorney Goldstein or Mr. Australia?
No, I mean, I I understand, um, and I feel like, you know, there they have, you know, the the local council has raised great points. And I feel like we've came back to them with great responses to their points, and that hasn't really been taken in. Um, for example, at the beginning, you know, there was no way to validate customer IDs. Well, we come back with this two-step verification process. Um, in in our conversations yesterday, they were saying, oh, well, our huge concern was this is an ice cream store and there's gonna be alcohol in ice cream. No, there's not, and I think, you know, once they saw that, they were super pleased with with the concept and the theme. So, um, a- a- another point they cited in their initial denial was the business has only been open for three months. Well, we're going on nearly five months and and the business has been flourishing and has shown to be a great addition to the neighborhood. So while I feel like, you know, they raise these valid points, I feel like we've also come back with great responses and valid responses. And but they're just, they're still objecting uh without really giving further reasoning.
And and
Yeah.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Uh, Attorney Goldstein, you indicated that uh just previously, uh I think last night or the night before you had a meeting. And many of the people who were in opposition attended that meeting and that they came or you all came to some kind of conclusion. But I'm hearing the same oppositions from those individuals who you indicated attended the meeting.
Um, uh Rhonda Sherrill isn't, um, to my knowledge, not present, um, who who is.
They're part of the same organizations.
Right, um, but sure, I mean, I don't know if that is a group decision or if it if if it is just, you know, one, one, one board member in opposition. Unfortunately, we were expecting Rhonda to be here tonight, um and she's not, so that that's unfortunate and detrimental to kind of, you know, our our discussion and really positive conversation last night. But, yeah, it's unfortunate she was not able to attend.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, I asked the board, um, is there, is there a motion?
We, I I believe uh prior to any vote being taken, are there people in support that are present? And they should also be afforded an opportunity to speak if anyone is present.
I think they were all here last week, unfortunately.
Okay, very good.
Stephen, do you have anything to add?
Um. Hey, I mean, we want the city to grow, uh the way I see it is, you know. I graduated from Holyoke High School, I worked at State for two years. You know, went to New York, came back for a reason. And the way I see it is, you know, when people trying to come to these cities to to build in it, to make it grow, to make it look better. And um, you know, uh I don't wanna make it sound, you know, um, but you know, we don't get the opportunity to 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 get that, you know. To show what we, what we got and to 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 present, you know, something that is completely not where everybody's saying that is opposed, I respect everybody's opinions. But, you know, without the opportunity, you guys are not gonna know what's gonna happen, like, you know, um. I just feel like people that 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 want to invest in this in the city, you guys go steady, I cleaned it up, you know, I cleaned up a really bad neighborhood. It's not for the worse, it's I I'm not working here to make it worse again. Um, that's all I have to say, and I want to thank, thank you to everyone.
Can I say something also, please?
Sure.
I'm an employee of of Antojos, and I agree with John Ramirez. Um, I believe that everyone should get an opportunity. Um, the owner didn't even get the chance, I feel like he should get the opportunity, he has been a great boss, great friend. Has done um, just done a great job in the neighborhood, as we said, we also even agreed to do charity for the churches, everything, just work together as a community, like do just great positive things. Um, I believe everyone should just get a opportunity, like John Ramirez said. If he violated legal actions, violation, take it away, whatever. Just ain't nothing wrong with just giving an opportunity. Like he said, he's just doing it for better, he want the community, the neighborhood, everything to grow. He just bringing ideas to the community, he wanna invest, it's just possibility, possi- positive stuff. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, commissioners? Um, are are are, where, you know, where should our um discussion take us? Is there a motion? Um.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, Madam Chair, we don't have any other discussion uh between commissioners, I'd like to make a motion, please. And that motion is, uh, I would uh make a motion to deny the all alcohol license for Antojos uh primarily because of uh close proximity to church and school and uh opposition, uh neighborhood opposition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner De Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
No.
Commissioner Espinosa, yes. Um, so, um, your motion has, um, or your petition has been, um, denied.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next.
Um, next item on the agenda is a new petition for change manager from Melka Ramos Carlos Melendez, and also change of DBA from Top Shell to Skin located at twenty Chestnut Street. Um, someone for some mute yourselves, thank you. Um, i- if I may, before, before we continue, um Attorney Smith, I I do see the that um, um Bishop Swan has um joined um to Zoom. Um, do we allow him to speak, although we've already made a decision?
I, I, I'm guessing due to his letter that when we tell him what the result is, um, he'll be satisfied, Bishop Swan, are you there, can you hear us?
I'm here, I'm on a plane, so I'm not, I'm not prepared to speak.
Okay, well, Bishop Swan, the license was already denied.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there someone here for, um, Top Shelf?
Yes, Carlos.
Hello, Mr. Melendez.
How we doing?
Okay, so this is a, a new petition for change of manager.
Correct.
Milka Ramos to yourself and also a change of DBA from Top Shelf to Skin.
Correct.
Okay. So, so, what are, what are, um. Mi- Mr. Melendez, I'm sorry, I thought you were already the manager of record, did we discuss this before?
I think, yeah, we're the manager of record, I, but I think there was a mix-up in the paperwork and for some reason, Rama was still on it.
Madam Chair, this is the issue that we had where in our renewal, they crossed out. Um, Ms. Ramos's name and wrote on Carlos Melendez, but we did not have a formal petition to change the manager. To Carlos Melendez, so that that's what this is today.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And, and in, um, and you've already done all the appropriate paperwork to change the manager of record. And you've done all the paperwork to change the name from Top Shelf to Skin?
I think Paul Ramish has done that, yes.
Okay, is Mr. Ramish here? No, do we know Attorney Smith if he, if the, um, office, um.
We have. We have all the proper paperwork at this point, Madam Chair.
Okay, perfect, um, any questions from the Commissioners? No, then I'll make a motion to approve the new petition for change of manager from Milka Ramos. To Carlos Melendez and change the DBA from Top Shelf to Skin. Um, located at two forty Chestnut Street. There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, thank you and good luck.
Thank you, have a good weekend.
You too, um, next petition is a new petition for a car dealer license for class two and three. This is for detailing, wheel alignment, balance, use of new cars. Motors, transmission, change of oil for Dream Auto Convenience Inc., DBA Dream Auto located at. Four eighty-four Boston Road, Mohammed Ali Saleem, manager of record.
Um, Commissioners, we received a call for, from an attorney, Paul Karen. Uh, for the business, they are not going to have a vote on this special permit until September twenty-third. Uh, so I approved, I, I stated that we would agree to continue it to Septe- our September twenty-fourth hearing. Uh, they probably won't have the special permit in hand, but they will know one way or the other whether they have it and we can vote on. Uh, contingent on receiving a copy, um, so, uh, I'm asking for a motion to continue that September twenty-fourth.
Thank you. I make a motion to continue the, the new petition for car dealer license for class two and three. For Dream Auto Convenience Inc., DBA Dream Auto located at four eighty-four Boston Road. Mohammed Ali Saleem, manager of record. There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Next item on the agenda is a new petition for BYOB license for Petra Hooka Lounge. Uh, DBA Petra Hooka Lounge located at two seventy Worthington Street. Arthur M- Moshorov, manager of record. Um, anyone here for Hook, uh, Petra Hooka? No. Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion to continue the new petition for the BYOB license for Petra Hooka Lounge. DBA Petra Hooka Lounge located at two seventy Worthington Street. Um, to our next September meeting. Somebody has that date? Uh, continue to.
I'm at tenth?
The tenth, yeah, thank you, Tom. Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Um, next item is informational hearing. Um, for one day, one day beer and wine permit for September fifteen, twenty twenty-fifth. This is an outdoor event from twelve P M to. I guess, I could probably say it's twelve A M to eleven P M. Ages fifteen and older, the type of event is the WWE Raw Block Party. The event will be held at the Plaza on Bruce Landon Way, the name of the organization is the Mass. Convention Center Authority. Christopher Hayes is the person in charge, anybody here for? The Mass Convention Center?
Yep, Christopher Hayes here.
Hi, Christopher, how are you?
I'm well, thanks, how are you?
Good.
The times for this ha- have been amended, um, it's, it's actually two P M to seven P M, uh, when the event starts, it's just an outdoor. Uh, block party.
So two P M to seven P M?
Correct.
Perfect, okay, what else can you tell us?
It's, uh, we are hosting WWE Raw, Monday Night Raw, uh, here at the Mass Mutual Center on Monday night, uh, September fifteenth. Um, as you may or may not be aware, we just, uh, actually had a ribbon-cutting ceremony this afternoon introducing the new landing. Which is an outdoor entertainment space, uh, for the city of Springfield, downtown Springfield. Um, and we are looking to, uh, host a block party, um, preceding the WWE event. Uh, primarily, uh, focusing on merchandise sales, um, out, outside the venue before the, the event starts. But we would be looking to host a, uh, contained, uh, beer and wine bar inside the, uh, the, the Fan Fest.
Okay, now, um, are you going to have, are there going to be bracelets? Color cups, how are we going to make sure that, as I see, is fifteen and older?
It's fifteen and older for the WWE event is what the expectation is, yes, but the, uh, the event will be IDed and anybody, uh, over twenty-one will. Receive a bracelet.
Perfect, any questions from the Commissioners? No, okay, uh, did I like to make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine permit? For September fifteen for the outdoor event WWE Raw Block Party. Um, to be held at the Plaza Bruce Landon Way. There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you all, have a nice evening.
You as well, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is section seventy-seven, final hearings. Um, first one is Adventure Inc., DBA Panache Banquet Hall located at eight twenty-seven State Street. Charles G. Lee, manager of record, um, anybody here for Panache?
Yes.
And you are?
Claudette Powell.
Hello, Miss Claudette, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, Miss Claudette, where are we?
They're working towards the goal. So, we're not.
What, what is the, what is, what is the deadline, because I, I, I mean, what do you, what do you see? Because last time you thought maybe June, July, and we were maybe a little bit further than that. Um, so wh- what are you thinking right now?
Well, we're gonna, um, actually be starting back up hopefully in a couple of weeks, um. Putting HVAC systems in and go from there. Just got, kind of like got the approval on the loan, so. We should be starting soon.
So are you looking at how much time you think? I know this is a hard question to answer, but.
It's very hard.
More, more or less, I mean, it's, it's already going to September, pretty soon is going to be time to renew.
Can we see, yeah, um, that's the renewal, can we see where we are in December?
December?
I know I probably have to renew before then, but.
Okay. So you're looking for the first meeting in December?
Um, when you say the first meeting, what you mean?
Um, uh, the, the, the beginning of Dec- of December, we usually have two meetings, but the, our last meeting is usually. Um, approvals and, and that, so. Um, our December meeting will be. The ninth?
Tenth.
Oh, the tenth, I'm sorry, December tenth.
Well, let's do the, the last meeting in December.
That would fall on Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
Okay, so we're not meeting that time, so then I have to do the ninth?
The tenth.
The tenth, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, Commissioners, do you, do you have any questions?
Just like to ask, uh, so the reasoning behind that you haven't really pulled things together yet. Has basically been the loan situation, you were not able to.
Right. Yeah, I had to be do a funding.
Okay, and now that's in place? It's not.
Yes, I, it should be, it should definitely be in place, I haven't got the final word, but it looks very good.
Okay, so you haven't really gotten.
It's still, it's still with the underwriters, so. But, um, I don't see, I don't anticipate anything going wrong with it.
But if there's a possibility, if it's denied, we gotta be looking more towards something different than December. Just a question.
Yeah, if it's denied, definitely. But I don't even want to use that word. But, yeah, if it's denied, but I, I think we have a very good. It's, it's a very good chance that it won't be denied.
So, um, I know you don't want to use the word, but in the event. That it doesn't go through. I, I mean, are there, do you have an idea as to, you know, how, how would you be moving forward then?
Um, if it doesn't go through, then I'm gonna have to apply for another loan. Through a different channel, um, but. Right now, this loan is actually coming through me, my personal funds, so.
Well, I, I, I want to suggest to, to the Commission, um. Do we want to revisit December tenth? Or do we want to revisit prior to that to find out whether this loan was approved or not?
Yeah, I think that would be something that we should look into, I think. Oh, do you know the, uh, approval date? Or anticipated approval date?
I would say within a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay.
Yeah, everything's with, they have everything, all information and everything, so it's just a matter of, um. Getting that approval.
Madam Chair, is that she will let us know a- as soon as possible if the loan has been approved or not.
Okay.
And that could be, uh, telephone call to the Commission Office or.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I can come back, um, to the next meeting next month and, you know, I, everything should, hopefully, everything should be in place. But at time.
I, I think I like that idea, um, maybe we, we can continue for a month. And then, um, you can, I mean, if you know something sooner than that, you can let us know. But, you know, I, I'd hate to, to give you until December and then not know. And then here comes December and you are now reapplying someplace else, or we, we just. We just want to be behind you so that, you know, so, so that we're pushing you to, you know, um. To get things going, I know it's, it's hard, I know it's difficult, um. But we also just, you know, want to be as supportive as, as we can be.
Okay.
So, um, how do, do the Commissioners feel if, you know, we continued for a month? Just for the sake of, of an update and then. We can then extend it until December, or do you just want to go ahead and extend until December? And have her give us a call to let us know, um. The status of the, the loan.
I'm in agreement, extend for a month.
Agree.
Tom?
I, either way, works December, a month.
Okay.
So.
Okay, then I'd, I'd like to make a motion to ex- with our next meeting, we said, sorry.
Well, about a month is, uh, September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth, so I'd like to make a motion to continue to September twenty-four, the Evansure. Um, Inc., DBA Panache Banquet Hall located at eight twenty-seven State Street. Charles G. Lee, manager of record, um, just to give us, uh, an update then as to what's happening. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes, okay, thank you, Miss Claudette, nice seeing you.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Next item is, um, Graham's Package Store Inc., DBA Graham's Package Store. Located at sixteen forty-nine dash sixteen fifty-one Main Street. Richard LaFley, Junior Manager of Record, and this, we're revisiting the transfer and sales of the package store liquor license.
Uh, before we get into this, um, Attorney Fancy did reach out to me and I'm sure I see both attorneys are here, so they'll correct me if I'm wrong. But they asked ahead of time to go out to September twenty-fourth, no fault of theirs, the A B C C has not acted yet. Um, the process is moving, uh, it's, it's a little strange that it, it hasn't finished, but again, it's no fault of the attorneys or the applicant. Um, so they're asking to go to September twenty-fourth and I told them I didn't really anticipate an issue with that since it really falls with the A B C C. So, um, essentially, we're looking for a motion to go to September twenty-fourth, if that's not still accurate, attorneys, please tell us otherwise.
No, that's accurate, Attorney Fancy and I spoke this afternoon, and just so the Commissioners are aware, from our understanding, the, um. Investigation is completed, they made a recommendation for approval, so it's just a matter of the Commissioners have not acted on that yet. Um, so, we're in a waiting pattern, unfortunately. Attorney Fancy's, um, obviously she leads the charge on the transfer side because it's her client's actual, um, application for a transfer. But, um, that has been my understanding in the dialogue with the A B C C as well.
Yeah, that is, that's all correct and I.
Yeah, that is, that's all correct, and I think at this point, we're just waiting for their um, approval and Attorney Dilepsy is correct. I was informed from the investigator on the case that he did recommend it for approval, so it's a matter of just getting that final push through um, and review by the commission.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Graham's Package Store, Inc., DBA Graham's Package Store. Located at sixteen forty-nine dash sixteen fifty-one Main Street, um. Until September twenty-fourth. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
You, everyone. Thank you, Attorney Schmidt. Thank you all.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Blaze Restaurant, Inc., DBA Island Blaze. Restaurant located at seven oh eight Main Street, Guzimore, um, Wilson, manager of record. Um.
He's present in person.
He's present.
So, I missed two of the hearings. I'm very sorry. The first one I was actually on, I was having Zoom problems. So I was listening to the meeting and when you called my name, I started talking and realized that you weren't hearing me. So the second time, I actually just forgot, and I'm sorry about that. But I'm here with with good news that I've passed all my inspections. I had the health department come over yesterday and gave me their stamp of approval. And we set a date for opening on September fifth, which is next Friday. Our ribbon cutting, and so I'm gonna open this Friday to start cooking for the workmen and their family. People who helped me to put this place together, and if anyone wants to come in and buy food, we'll be open to selling food as well. But our official opening is September fifth.
And do you have your common vic license in here?
I'm not inherently, no, but I spoke to, um, what's his name? Brian at the, what do you call that place? O Y Tepus Street.
No, you get, you you get your common vic license from the license commission in this building. Do you have that yet?
No.
Okay, so you're not gonna be able, you know, you're not gonna be able to open on September fifth until you have a common.
Oh, good. Yeah, we will have it. We'll have it. I spoke to the contractor, he said, spoke to them, they should. Either mail it or email it to one of the two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any questions from the commissioners? No? Okay, well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on the agenda is administrative review of incident uh, report. And we do have a report on the Irish House. Um, Richard L. House, and this was an incident of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Did everyone have an opportunity to read? Um, the report? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, um. Officer Anderson, um, I mean, I did see that they said that they were, they were closed. I think by one thirty and everyone was out and had left by one forty-five, but the incident was at two thirteen A M.
Yes, that, yes, that is correct.
But it's safe to say nothing was going on inside.
No. Right, so I, I kept re-reading like, what what time are you guys out of there? Like, we, no one even was aware of that. That even occurred. They were gone by then.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, um, then I'd like to make a motion to take no action.
Second.
Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, that is all for tonight. Anything else that? Anybody needs to mention?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.